Mr. and Mrs. Harmon bought the board experience at the Mason Schools Foundation's auction. So, they very nicely gave that to their children tonight. So, they're gonna sit up and help us run our meeting tonight. So, we'll introduce them formally in a minute. But first, Colton, what are we going to do next item on the agenda?
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
That's right.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I mentioned, the honorary board members that we have tonight so generously donated to the Mason Schools Foundation annual auction. And this young lady to my left is Lacey Harmon. And this is Colton Harmon. And they are going to introduce their parents tonight who are with us in the audience.
That's my mom, that's my dad, that's Lacey, and I have a little sister named Brennan and grandma at my house.
And a grandma at your house.
That's great.
Very nice. You wanna tell us anything? You're in the sixth grade, right? And you're in Mrs. Spade's class? Nice. And who is your teacher?
My teacher is Mrs. Golds.
Yes. And what grade are you in?
Third.
Third grade. You like school?
Yeah.
Favorite subject? All of them? Do you have a favorite subject, Lacey? What's that? Math? Good. Heading down that STEM road, right? Excellent. Well, the first thing we're going to do, as we do every election year, we have a swearing in of new board members. So, Dr. Cooper, our superintendent, I'm gonna let you swear in Colton first.
Okay. Colton, do I come around here? I'm gonna have you so your parents get your face there. Yeah, I'm gonna turn this microphone so it catches our voices. Is that close enough that you're catching our voices over there, sir? Hello? Test? Test? Okay. I'll hold it up here.
Here, I got one.
Does that sound good? Then you have one as well. Okay, are you ready, Colton?
Yeah.
All right. Do you, Colton Harmon, solemnly swear that you will support the Comets and always strive to be an ambassador for the Comet culture while creating Mason moments? And that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as an honorary member of the Board of Education of Mason City School District in Warren County, Ohio, to the best of your ability in accordance with our beloved green and white? Will you be able to do that for us, Colton?
I will.
Well, let us all welcome Colton officially to the board.
Lacey's going to be a little...
Lacey, you can be right there, that's great.
She's a little shy tonight.
Lacey is submitting her oath to your board. That's perfect. I'll go ahead and just read it, is that okay, Lacey? And then you can just nod your head as an agreement and we'll say that's good. All right. Do you, Lacey Harmon, solemnly swear to that you will support the Comets and always strive to be an ambassador for the Comet culture while creating Mason moments? And that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as an honorary member of the Board of Education of Mason City School District in Warren County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with our beloved green and white? Lacey, what do you say? Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Cooper.
Thank you.
Appreciate your help on that. So, first of all, I'd like to give the parents an opportunity. If you'd like to say anything about the Schools Foundation, about the auction, about your participation with it, just any of your feedback, we're very grateful that you did that and that you're here tonight with us.
We are very fortunate, we are originally from East Tennessee. So, we certainly picked this school district and home for our family because of the Mason City Schools. We're proud to be... We're proud to be Mason Comets and are trying to teach the children the importance of the school board and the school foundation. And we appreciate the opportunity to let even the young ones be part of this process so that they can learn and understand the importance of it. So, thank you very much.
Any board comments or discussion about the foundation in particular?
Well, I do have a question for Colton Bean. Is...Colton, are you old enough to also be from East Tennessee? Or are you from here?
I'm from Ohio.
All right. Okay, well, good. There was a question, a concern about allegiance to the Bengals when we get ready to play the Titans, so, all good.
He is a Tennessee fan, though, aren't you, Volunteers? How do you know that?
Well, we certainly thank you, you two, for being up here and for mom and dad for supporting the effort. The dollars go to a good cause. Those causes are usually giving opportunities above and beyond. And so, after 20 years, this is an opportunity above and beyond. I've never seen anyone willingly come up here and take this kind of activity in the evening. So, we really do appreciate it, and the foundation does as well.
I just, yeah, thank you, parents, for involving your children in the process so young and kind of getting them used to understanding, you know, how the district umbrella works and how decisions are made. And, Lacey, I felt just like you the first time I sat up here, trust me. But thank you both for wanting to sit up here with us. That makes me just so cute to come in and see your little smiling faces and have you sit in that chair. Sometimes my feet don't touch either when they give me the wrong chair. So, thank you, Colton and Lacey, for being here.
All righty. Colton, next item on the agenda?
Dr. Cooper, please share your presentation for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, sir, and fellow board member. I appreciate you giving us the opportunity on the floor to do that. Tonight, we have three presentations. The first presentation, we have made part of our rhythm of work. And what we do, Colton and Lacey, is we show a video. And the video is to show a little bit of our story. We call them the Mason Moment Wayfinding Video. So, I'll ask Ms. Carson to go ahead and begin our video.
And this is a video highlighting our Mason Intermediate Veterans Day celebration, which really is a wayfinding moment for so many of us. We recognize that less than half of 1% of the United States actively serves in our nation's military today. And so, as fewer of us are directly connected to those who serve, it becomes even more important that our children learn of these sacrifices in school and give thanks to our nation's veterans.
This field is just amazing, that thing that all these people are able to help serve. And knowing that all these people are serving, knowing that we are safe because people try and they don't give up, showing us that we can be empathetic for each other. We can help if we cannot give up and do what's right. We can stand up for our society.
There were so many Americans that died for the sake of the flag. Even before we had a flag, they were fighting to get our liberties, to have our choices, that they didn't have in other countries, that's why they were coming. They're doing it for their neighbors, their friends, their families. The entire country. They're not doing it for themselves. The guys that go and they serve, the guys that fight, they are willing to go to the last, not a month, their last month. You look through history, there are guys that did extraordinary things. Just because that's where they were, that's why they would be there.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Ms. Carson, and all of the team that put that together during our first presentation. The wayfinding video, the purpose of that is to remind people as part of our Comet culture, we do have a story to tell. And as people understand our story, they find their way in our culture and find their belonging and sense of belonging. Our second presentation tonight is a special presentation that is about some of our wonderful student athletes who have done something spectacular that's never been done in my, probably in the history of the world, most likely, but at least in the history of our state. And that is to win six consecutive state titles as state champions. And that is our women's tennis team. So, I'd like to invite our coach and women's tennis team to the podium. Please welcome them to the podium.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm Mike Reed, and I've got these comments over here on my left. And I just want to thank the board for, again, recognizing the achievements of these fantastic student athletes. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to my three co-captains, senior co-captains. There we go.
Hi, everyone. My name is Risha. And I know we have a longstanding tradition of coming to these board meetings. And we want to thank you guys for always recognizing us and taking the time to do this. But just to start off with our annual recap of the season, I'm just gonna go down and introduce all of our teammates and comments that helped us accomplish this win. So, starting off with the freshmen, firstly, we have Anna Gotique. Anna was one of our freshmen this year. And she came into tryouts. And we already knew she was gonna be on the team because she was just such an amazing tennis player. And kind of seeing her grow and come out of her shell this year has been a really amazing thing to watch. Next, we have Patricia Chowdhury. Now, Patricia, throughout most of the season, played third singles for our team. And third singles is just historically a position that has like the longest matches, just has like flat-out rally battles. And Patricia, as a freshman, like took this responsibility on so well. And we want to thank her again for just like all she's done for the team. And then next, we have Herschita Gunga. Gunga is an amazing tennis player. But she's also, just as everyone on the team knows, an amazing student. She's just so insanely smart. And we all kind of learn something from her every day. And then our other sophomore is Sonal Marla. Now, Sonal was our designated underclassman representative. So, if the underclassmen had any issues with the way the senior captains were running things, Sonal talked to us. We can't always, we can't guarantee she was always listened to, but she tried. And then she was also our social media influencer. She, we really had the Mason Women's Tennis Instagram this year. And Sonal's a big contributor to it. And then, starting with our juniors, we have Anisha Nandra. When Anisha came on to the team, it just kind of felt like she's always been on the team. Her energy was just so uplifting. And she kind of improved all of our moods with her smile she always had. And then next, we have Swathy Reddy. Swathy is a junior on the team. And she was on the team last year. But when she came in this year, she improved so much from last year. And she definitely got a lot more playing time. And it was just reflected in her results. And she was still our team's designated hairdresser. If anyone needed an emergency ponytail or braid, Swathy was always there and ready. And then next, we have Tanya Marla. Now, Tanya is a senior on the team. And she's been on the team for the past three years. And Tanya's just always super reliable. She's also given me a hair tie or two, I'm forgetful. And she's such an amazing tennis player. And she really pulled through with a new partner at second doubles this year. And we really could count on her, and she's improved so much. And then another senior is Nishi Gondra. Now, Nishi was unique because she's a senior. But she, this was her first year on the team. So, we called her like our fourth-year freshman. So, throughout the course of the season, she slow... We, when there would be like a big match that she won, we would bump her up a grade. And so, finally, when she made the state champion tournament, we made her a senior. And it was just a really big moment for her, I think, because she finally got the recognition of being a senior on the team. And then next, we have Herschita Upaganti. Herschita was my doubles partner this year and sophomore year. And it's been really great playing with her because I always know, like, when I have an off day, I can count on her to help us, like, still get the win. And she's an amazing tennis player, even when she's at singles and doubles. I don't know how she switches back and forth. But she pulled out a win during the state championship in singles. And that was a really huge accomplishment. Now, Ria Zuchi, one of my senior co-captains. She started off on the team as what we call our bench gang, our bench gang president and co-founder. And over the course of the past two years, she's stayed on bench gang as just a huge team motivator. But she's also become such an integral part of our team through her playing, because she's improved so much, and just through her leadership. Like, she always gives her input in lineups. She's the one who like researches other teams and knows everything about every player. And she's always the one cheering for us whenever she sees a good shot hit with the most unique cheers. And then finally, we have Shyla Agarwal. And Shyla, or the franchise, as Coach Reed calls her, but nobody really knows why. She was definitely our MVP this year. And she may not show it because of how humble she is, but both in and out of school, she's just an amazing person. And she won state two times. She wasn't gonna say it, but sometimes we all forget how amazing she is. And then she just pulls out an amazing win. And we love having her on the team.
So, I'm just gonna talk about some of our team's accomplishments this season. We've had an amazing season. We went 20-0 this year, which is our second year in a row going undefeated, which is an amazing accomplishment for us. We also, as you guys know, won our sixth straight state championship, which we're all really happy because we've been working really hard all season. So, it's super refreshing to know that our hard work is paying off. We also had four state qualifiers, one of them being myself, Risha Chada, and Herschita Upaganti, and Yishy Gondra. So, congratulations to them for having an amazing season as well. We also won Coach's Classic, which is just like a tournament within like teams in the city. And our second team, like within varsity A, got third at Coach's Classic, which is pretty big that our second team still got third in the city. We also won GMCs this year for the eighth year in a row. And Coach Reed was also awarded with Coach of the Year. So, thank you, Coach Reed. We couldn't have done it without you. And I just wanted to give a little shout-out to Patricia for also being awarded with Newcomer of the Year. So, we're super excited to see what she has to do for Mason in the future.
That's great.
So, now I'm gonna talk about what kind of contributes to our great success. So, then there's three main things that do that. The first one, I think, is our team traditions. After every practice, after every match, we're always going to LCAP. When we walk in, the workers, they all know us and know what we're here for. We went after we won state. I think it's something that we all really look forward to. Another thing that we did this year is going to Cincy Sammies. We went after practices, after matches. Even Mr. Shudoff was so gracious and gave us free, gave us free Cincy Sammies after we won state. So, thank you to him. And then another big tradition that we have is Coach Reed does this thing called Champ Balls. So, we do like fun little games throughout the season. And they're really, really hard to win one. I've never won one in my four years. But basically, if you win a, like, it's a fun little game. You get a champ ball, takes a regular tennis ball, writes the word champ on it, and like the date that you won it. It may sound not that big of a deal, but I think it's a pretty big deal. For my birthday, Nishi Gondra gave me a champ ball. She knew how much it meant to me. Yeah. And then another big thing is, the second biggest thing, I think, is having really talented players on our team. Of course, we have Shyla, back-to-back state championships. And then also this year with Nishi coming in, we don't even have like the best players in Ohio. We have some of the best players in the country. So, that's really important. And I think having them come in every day and kind of motivating us to get better is really important. Because obviously, we have a lot of fun on our team. But you know, our goal every day is to go out and win a state championship. But when you have people like Shyla, Nishi, Risha, and Herschita every day on the field, you know, me and the bench gang, we're dancing, we're laughing, we're having fun. But then you see them every day getting out and just working really, really hard and always kind of motivating us to get better. That's just a really big impact on our team. Like, I know for Shyla, I know she doesn't really brag about herself. But I mean, you think a freshman coming in, and she's never let the team down. I mean, the only match we've lost the last three years was when Shyla didn't come. So, you know, without her, we really wouldn't be anything. And I know... And I think the last thing is just what I said. We're just having a lot of fun out here. I mean, all of us, we're really involved. I mean, we have Risha Chada, you know, editor of The Chronicle. We have Herschita Gunga writing her next novel. You know, and then we also have Tanya, who's really involved with student body. I think all of us, like, we're all in like national honor society together. We all do SIBs, student government, and like even Science Olympiad. We just all have a lot of clubs together, it's just really fun. And I think tennis is like a great break in our day. You know, as they said, you know, Herschita Gunga, she's very smart, very involved. So, just having practice every day and an hour and a half break is just a great way for us to bond and get together and relax and have fun. And I mean, a lot of us have already been playing together since before high school. You know, we kind of played the same tennis clubs growing up. So, we're just all really great friends, and it's just a lot of fun. And I think when you look at all these other schools, you know, when they go warm-up for matches, they're really serious. But you know, Mason, we're really not like that, you know? Our goal every day is just to cheer louder than the other team. And you know, you see their benches, and they have one person, and they look like they don't want to be there. But when you look at Mason, you know, we're all having fun, we're all cheering, trying to come up with the best nicknames as possible. And like, I think every other player in the state just wants to be a part of Mason because not only do we win, we have a lot of fun. And I think it's just a great atmosphere. And the big part of this is because of Coach Reed. Every single year, he's always coming up with different ways to make us have fun, to make us be engaged. And not a lot of coaches are like that. Next year, we're really gonna miss him. And I think a big thing this year, I think Risha mentioned it, our Instagram. I saw Mason City Schools repost some of our stuff this year, even Mr. Cooper, even Dr. Cooper, so yeah. I mean, our Instagram is run by our two social media managers, Anisha and Swathy. They did a great job this year with it. We even did a lot of interviews. This year was just a lot of fun. And I couldn't imagine playing with any other group of girls, you know? We all love the same sport, we all love each other. And I think that was what makes us really special.
Before we go any further in that presentation, board, would you like to? Comments, questions?
Yeah, I thought for a team that's done this six years in a row, you guys would know the routine by now. You don't get to just go sit back down after you talk about it.
Gotta take questions.
All right. I'll start with a question. What is the best nickname that you feel comfortable sharing in this meeting?
So, I think we have one really good nickname. And this one was given by Coach Reed. So, you see Risha Chada here. Many of you might not know she had an older sister named Reyna. So, when she got on the team, she was named Baby Chada, you know, for two years. And you know, we thought the nickname would change, you know, junior year, her sister graduated. And then she became, you know, Big Chada, the leader. And I think that's a really good nickname. Another one, of course, is Franchise. I still don't know what that means, but you know. And I think my favorite nickname for this year is PC. Because you know, when Patricia's getting those three-hour matches, it's just really quick and easy to yell, PC.
So, can I ask one? I feel, I feel like we're not gonna, this isn't gonna be a full meeting until we get at least a little bit of a rundown on the final match. Describe the weather conditions, maybe the, how it all kind of came about and the ups and downs.
Yeah, if you can find the strength to muster up your memory. I don't know if you've done this before or not, but...
So, unlike last year, it was a little bit more relaxed, you could say. Didn't come down to the wire. So, we were playing actually down here in Cincinnati, which we usually play up in Columbus. A little bit of a home-field advantage, you could say. So, we get out, and our final match, it was sunny, it was warm. It's never really like that at all, actually. So, you know, I think they sensed, you know, the sixth one was coming. So, we so... Oh, there was a lot of leaves on the court. That was, that was a problem. You see Coach Reed getting out there really early with his leaf blower, trying to blow all the leaves off. You know, it was really hard. But I think, I think we pushed through. And then, you know, I think our first win of the day, I think, I think it was...
Shyla?
Patricia at third singles, you know. We thought she was gonna have a really tough match. And that girl was really good. But you know, Patricia's still got it done. She won, she won pretty quickly. And then we had our second finisher, you know. Who else would it be besides Shyla? You know, she won a state championship the day before. She played that girl in the state semifinals. And then she played her again on Sunday, and she beat her again. You know, nothing new. So, she was, she was able to clinch that match. And then the match came down. We're trying to all see who's gonna finish first. And we had, at second singles, we had Herschita Upaganti finish the match for us, which is really big for her. Because in years past, you know, she's never been able to finish first. But this year, she was. And she played someone who was really good. But you know, she was just better. And she went out there, she finished the match really quickly. So, yeah.
So, I have two questions. The first one, you guys aren't old enough to remember some of the great sports dynasties of yesteryear. I think the closest one might be the Chicago Bulls of the 90s. And I don't know that all of you were born at that point. But try to put six state championships in context for us because that's just, there's not very many teams, especially high school teams, where you graduate kids every year that are able to have that level of consistency. And what do you attribute that level of excellence and consistency to?
I think it's just like all of us working together, like during the season. We all like, everybody knows when we can have that balance of having fun and like turning it on before state every year. So, I think it's just like all of us having that balance of like being able to have fun, but also being able to practice hard and like turn it on before matches. And it's just like, a lot of it's camaraderie also. Like, as Ria said earlier, we've all grown up together. We've all played tennis like before even season started. And like, we've known each other through our families, like... So, I think all of us just being able to come together and like, nobody is like expecting too much out of everybody. Like, there's pressure, but there's not too much pressure on everybody. So, it's just that good balance that we all have.
Actually, I also think it's a lot because of two people that are too humble to say it. But Coach Reed and Shyla are huge... but Coach Reed and Shyla are huge contributors to the team. Shyla's been on the team for four years, four years that we've won it. Before that, there was her sister. So, we've just been lucky to have her on the team. And Coach Reed has really mastered getting freshmen in and turning them into good doubles players because when we come in freshman year, you really, we really can't play doubles because mostly like offseason, you play singles. And for me personally, like I could not hit a good volley or consistent volley, or maybe like two in a row. And Coach Reed would just make me come out, practice, and like hit volleys against a wall. And that actually really helped. I did think he was insane for a little bit, but. Like, I saw the results and that was also just a huge factor in our team's doubles.
Well, I would like to just thank the tennis team for just sharing your story with us. And the thing that I think all of us love so much about it is, it's not just about the game of tennis, but it's about just you as people and supporting each other. And I love hearing that spirit that you brought tonight. So, thank you. One other, Mr. Wise always reminds us, there's another ingredient to the success, and it's a lot of our, our parents, like getting you to those matches. So, if we could give our parents a hand. Hours and hours, so thank you for your investment in making that happen. And before we finish with tennis, we'd like to invite, if we could, The Goat, the next nickname, Mike Reed down. Coach Reed, if you would come down to, if you would be willing to do that for a second, that'd be great. Coach Reed, we have a few things that we would like to just share with you, if you would just give us the second to do that. And I think the first is a message from, I think, a fierce competitor and also a good friend.
Hello, Coach Reed. It's Coach T here at Sycamore. And I want to congratulate you on a fantastic career as head coach at Mason. Over the years, you guys have won a ton of GMC titles and state championships. It's just been one heck of a run to watch. I know for me personally, some of the most exciting matches have come with the Comets versus the Aviators matches. And, you know, win or lose, you knew it was going to be fun, you knew it was going to be exciting. The kids were going to be into it. It was just really the way high school tennis should be. So, on behalf of Sycamore and the great Cincinnati tennis coaches, just congratulations, and you have just had a fantastic career. Well done.
So, for anyone tuning in that may not be familiar, tonight we honored the girls tennis team. But Coach Reed, they may not know that you also are coaching the boys tennis team. And I believe the boys have also won a couple of state championships as well and had multiple individual champions. And I don't know all the details on that, but you might have some of those details in your mind. But we just want to thank you because when we hear of six years and just all the investment that you've given for our kids and the camaraderie, that doesn't happen accidentally. We know culture is intentional. So, we appreciate that about you and all that you've given to the program and just all investing in our, our kids' lives. Really, really appreciate that. We compared earlier to the Vols, and the Vols had, I think they had a special coach for.
A little bit.
Yeah, through that time and had really built that camaraderie. So, we just appreciate you. And tonight, we also, I think, are going to take a vote with our guest because we, we started something new in our district where we honor once a month someone with the Mason medallion. So, I'm going to turn it over to our guest board members at this time.
One of the highest accolades one can achieve in life is the admiration of their colleagues. So, Coach Reed, that, that is well deserved in your case. We are extremely proud of you. And we've had some discussion amongst the board members. And Colton, what would you like to do now?
I would like to make a motion to award Mr. Reed the Mason Medallion Award for the, for the month of November.
I'd second, yeah, I would second that motion.
Excellent. Any discussion?
I, yeah, I have. So, the parents, this is, you know, certainly no surprise to you, but the way this meeting went tonight and recognizing the team is very emblematic of Coach Reed. I mean, he came up, said a couple of things, and just invited the team right up. So, always putting the team first is something that we've seen. We've had a chance here in these board meetings more than, than normal to see. But, but each of you, you girls have had the opportunity to spend several years in the program, achieve super-high accomplishments. And, and part of that, as you all know, is based on the coach and, and the program that, that he put together long before you even arrived here. One of the things about tennis that we all also know is often some of the best tennis players don't play in high school. They move on to their, their own, their own matches and on their own, in their own plan. And I think one of the things Coach Reed has done is made an inviting environment here at Mason High School so that it was attractive to come and be a part of something maybe even bigger than winning state championships, which is also very evident with, with the camaraderie that you guys have built. The last thing I just want to say too is, I always say that, you know, the parents are, in some sports for sure, tennis being right up there at the top, couldn't do it without the parents. Because by the time a, a young tennis player becomes a freshman, they have had years of, of preparation and practice and experience. And so, we appreciate you. But also, part of those parents, along with those parents, is Coach Reed's partner in this, in this effort, which is Anne Marie. The Reeds have a lot of people in their, in their family. We won't even try to count them all up, but I can say this for sure, that Anne Marie Reed is the best tennis player of all of them and might be right up there tied for the top strategist. And I won't even say the top because it's Coach Reed's moment here. But it takes, you know, it takes a, a lot to, to put together a whole effort. She's been in the concession stand, she opens up the court, she helps with scheduling and all the stuff that you guys do. And so, Anne Marie, could you stand up? And then, just the last thing is, Coach Reed's resilience in this program has been something that extends past all of, all of this team's time here too. He's been here through some ups and downs and has always had a commitment, not as much to the sport of tennis, but wanting to get there and create an environment for both the boys and the girls to have the best experience they can in tennis. And he's really, he's really done that well up to the, the level of being a recipient of this medallion. And we certainly appreciate everything you've done, Mike, and, and glad to be a part of presenting this tonight.
Wow.
Well, thanks, Mr. Wise and Dr. Cooper. Thanks for those kind words. It's very humbling. And Kevin, you took all, all the things I was going to say about Anne Marie. I really do owe her a lot and the team does as well. She's, she is the chief strategist on the team. Whether that's an official title or not, she does a, a lot of that. So, anyway, I appreciate everything that you guys have said. It's very kind. But really, I've had fantastic athletes and just great people to coach. And, you know, it's just been a pleasure having some influence on their lives because they're just great kids. So, that's it for me.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Just one more second. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Bevan, please call the roll.
Mrs. Yingling?
Yes.
Mrs. Bachi?
Yes.
Mr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. Galvin?
Yes.
Mr. Orr?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy? Mr. Colton?
Yes.
Seven, zero.
And the team, we have some gifts, tokens of our appreciation.
This team has won every gift we've ever given out. So, this is a brand-new gift tonight. Because I'm like, we can't give them the mugs. We can't give them the bags.
We're squeezing back on you, so we're not in the picture.
It's all good.
You thought you were getting another water bottle, didn't you?
You'll need those on your way out tonight.
Yes, you will.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Well done, well done.
Congratulations.
All right, well done.
Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
You're the best storyteller ever.
Oh, you're hilarious. Love it.
Well done.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Hey, man, great job. Thank you.
He's tightened up just a little bit right there.
Connie used to pitch. Can you go here? There we go. Yeah, there we go. There we go. That's great. One, two, three. Okay. And then, very, very good. And then, let me get one with Coach Reed and. And if I get Coach and, yep, right up front. There we go. There you go. Yep. Yes, in the front. Well, what, what feels most comfortable? We can have everybody kind of move this way just a little bit. Wrap around. There we go. That works. That works. One, two, three. And then can I get one with just Coach and Anne Marie and then just one with just Coach?
I've only been out once. Yeah, but I just, I went out once with the. And Jen Mott and Cherry. It was so much fun.
Somebody told me that.
I was very tired. Exhausted, but it was very fun. It was great with them because they knew the rules and could just tell. Rules are complicated. That's my kind of. I think they know those rules.
We have one more superintendent presentation, and I'm going to ask Ms. Carson to just give us a little framing for the next presentation, and then we'll have our student honored up.
Well, for the very first time, our, the college board has released to schools students who actually scored per, not just, you know, not just like fives, but perfect scores on AP tests. And we actually had three students who qualified for that, two of which are, two of whom are alum. So, we love like hearing about our alumni when they're not here. So, one is Ravi Bandaru, who was class of 2022. He is at Penn State now studying pre-med, and he received a perfect score on his computer science A. Also, we had Noah Schuler, who is class of 2022, who's now attending Rose Holman, studying computer science. And he scored his perfect score on the computer science principles AP test. And we're thrilled to also have with us tonight Michelle Chen, who is class of 2023, who I know has a huge fan in this audience. And Dr. Cooper may even talk a little bit about this, Michelle, because your artwork has inspired him for a long time and it certainly makes all of us feel really great when we get to see it. So, I'd love to invite you to come up to the podium. And Michelle had the huge honor of getting a perfect score for, for drawing with AP Art Studio. But the really amazing thing with AP Art Studio is that isn't just a test, it's actually a portfolio. And, and when our artists do that, it's really incredible. So, I'd love to invite Michelle just to say a few, tell us a little bit about what her portfolio was all about this last, as, that she turned in.
Yeah, okay. I'm a little nervous because I'm, I'm much worse at speaking than Ria is. So, for those that don't know, which is probably most people, I'll just give like a quick rundown of what AP Art is about. So, last year, I spent the whole year building my portfolio, obviously. And that consists of 15 works that are part of a sustained investigation. And it's called that because we model our entire portfolio off of kind of a central question. And mine was about how like my culture and my heritage has impacted the relationships in my life and my identity and just pretty much every aspect that I could explore. So, in my portfolio, it's a mix of drawings and paintings and a few mixed media things. And I explored relationships, both superficial and deep. So, I had things related to like Chinese food, what my pantry looks like, which is the artwork that's in the superintendent's office right now. And I also explored like my relationship with my grandparents and school and that type of thing. So, APR is a pretty unique course because it's not like some AP exams that you study really hard for and you are guaranteed to score high. So, I was pretty surprised to see that email in my inbox that said, "You got a perfect score on your portfolio." And I was shocked, but also pleased. I guess of all of the AP courses that I've taken over the last four years of high school, which is far too many, APR was both my favorite and I think the most worthwhile one because I was able to both share my ideas with other people and other artists, which I hadn't really experienced before that. And I was able to learn more about myself through making art, which is pretty great. So, I want to thank my parents for always supporting me and my art, even though I'm sure my early artwork was really ugly. But I stuck with it and it's become a really big part of my identity now. And I also want to thank my AP Art teacher, Ms. Zimmerman, for always being there and supporting me both in, inside and out of class because she was always there to have conversations about art, but also if I was having issues in school, she was there to listen. So, yeah.
Michelle, do you have a favorite piece or one that you want to talk about in particular from your portfolio?
Yeah, so, it was probably, it was actually one of the first few things that I made. And like most things, it was created at 2:00 AM before the day was two, in my bathroom. And it's, it's called Homage, and it's, it's like a. And it's, um, it's called Homage, and it's, uh, it's like a contemplative piece. It's a painting that I made. It's pretty small, like this big. And it's me sitting in my master bedroom with a picture of my parents hanging over. And it's kind of like both a sense of expectation and gratitude for how far I've come, but also all of the pressures that came with that. Well, I have another favorite, too. I talked about it a little bit, but, uh, it's called Breakfast Run, and it's of me in my pantry, reaching up towards the top shelf. And I put probably too much detail in it, but I had a lot of fun. And it kind of represented the guilt that I feel for maybe not enjoying my cultural foods as much as I should. And that's the one in his office right now.
So what inspires you and who is your favorite artist?
Who's my favorite artist? I don't know. But, um, I'm taking AP Art History right now. So, um, as I learn about more things, I'm kind of growing my interest in different eras of art. And my inspiration would just be like ordinary things in my life that I probably wouldn't look twice at if I wasn't an artist. Because I look at like clear things are pretty interesting to like paint or try to render and like highlights on things, really bright things, things that other people probably wouldn't care about, but, yeah.
We certainly appreciate you being here tonight to share your victory with us. That's, that's a heck of an accomplishment. Uh, you mentioned that you learned some things about yourself. And pretty much post-COVID, we talk about mental health, not just of students, but of our society in general. Did drawing help you through some of that time? And, and when you reflect on what you learned about yourself, um, what, what would you, what advice would you give to others, to others in expressing themselves with art?
I would just say, don't be afraid to be vulnerable when you're expressing things creatively. Because before this class, I was already pretty skilled technically, but all I would paint was like still lifes of fruit bowls and like pictures of birds, but that didn't really represent who I was. But this class was both like my entryway into like putting deeper messages into my art and exploring those things, even though they might not be like traditionally pretty or something like that.
Michelle, I just have to say, I, I do have that art piece up in my office. And if folks don't know, every year I get the great privilege of going around and choosing pieces of art through our K-12 program and having those on display for a year for our executive team to see on a regular basis. And now hearing a little bit of the story when we have, um, team meetings even tomorrow and the next day, your piece is right up there to remind us of some of your story. And I have to tell you, your artwork is outstanding, and I love art, and it is just, it's amazing. But to hear tonight just your depth of understanding of yourself as an artist and your perspective of how you see life, it's even more beautiful. So thank you for sharing tonight with us, and thank you for sharing your artwork. I think it will inspire many more people throughout your life. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
If you'd like to come up, the board would love to have a picture with you, and we have a gift for you as well. At this point in the meeting, a little bit, it's tight back here. At this point in the meeting, we are going to thank the Harmon family for sharing this board meeting with us and doing such a great job of seeing what it's like to be a board member. So we have some gifts for you as well. And we're going to take some pictures of us with you because we're so proud you were here tonight. And then we're going to let you go home and do your homework. Sound good?
Okay.
Thank you.
You don't want to stay for the five-year forecast?
I do not have my email up, but I have...
We appreciate you guys.
Is it, it's not this one? If it is, then I've already got it. Let me just, I'll just refresh it.
And we normally take a break at this point in our meeting, so if anyone else, um, needs to be somewhere else or has some other things to do tonight, you can make your exit. Our feelings won't be hurt, but if you'd like to stay, you're welcome to do that as well.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Franchise. Should probably get that one down.
So Jonathan, you have one more item tonight, correct? Treasure.
I do. The last item we have under this section is turning it over to our amazing treasurer, Sean Bevan, to walk us through the five-year forecast tonight.
Thank you. I don't know if I could give nearly as riveting of a, of a presentation as a state tennis championship or six in a row, but, uh, we'll give it a try. So, um, as our board knows, and for the people here at home, uh, who may be watching tonight or down, down the road, we approve our five-year forecast a couple of times a year, once in either October, November, or once in the spring. And so basically, our five-year forecast kind of gives us a, an update on where we are currently and where we're heading with the district's financial picture. And we approve it for a couple of reasons. One, it's a part of our compliance, um, with state rules and laws, and we have to submit that to the Department of Education. But also, and really just as, if not more importantly, we look at a five-year forecast on a very regular basis to help us with our own planning and, and looking at where things are at in the district financially, both now and then in the next, you know, five, 10 years. So, um, tonight, we actually have, later on the agenda, we have the five-year forecast on here for approval. So we thought we'd take a few minutes and, and look at some financial updates. So one of the things we have up here on the screen right now is our fiscal stewardship as our foundational rock. We talk a lot in the district about, um, our three, probably our three favorite rocks, which is culture, personalized learning, and inclusive excellence. But one of the things we, we talk not quite as much about, but is also very important, is our foundational rock. And so the idea of, with the foundational rock being that the, the three big rocks we have are kind of built, um, and, and balanced on top of the foundation that is provided by our community and by our constituents to help us do the things that we can do. So first, a look at a little bit of the things over the last year that we have, or a couple of years that we have dealt with. In terms of finances, uh, you see up here our E plus R equals O. Again, that is a kind of a, a shout out to our culture rock. And so, uh, we've had the chance to respond as a district financially and operationally to some events that have happened uh, through the economy or whatnot, or other places. Uh, and so we're going to highlight just a few of those here, um, tonight. And so the, on the first slide here, we've got a few things that, um, have been impacted by inflation. So our entire, uh, community, state, country has been, uh, dealing with and responding to the impacts of inflation over the last several months. And we are no, certainly no exception to that. Um, and our transportation department, um, over the last couple of years, since the levy was passed in 2020, we've had, we've seen over a 20% increase in fuel costs. So we've had to, uh, deal with that in our financial situations. Some, some things we've done there, shout out to, um, Mark Merznowski and all of our bus drivers. They work really hard to make sure that our routes are efficient. Uh, we're providing high-quality experience to our students and our families, um, and also maximizing that efficiency in our, in our bus routes. In terms of utilities, uh, back in 2020, we were able to lock in, uh, some rates for our electric and gas. And so we are fortunately, as we've seen, uh, that market continue to climb in terms of costs, we are fortunately avoiding that so far. We have about another year left on our contracts with both electric and gas. We're locked in. So there, and again, appreciate Todd and his, and his work and the consultants we work with to help us lock in those rates. Um, in terms of health insurance, um, over the last five years, we've averaged 29%. It sounds like a big number, but that's over a five-year period. If you average under 6% per year, uh, on insurance, uh, not too bad. We, we look at national trends, certainly are higher than that. And so as a district, we are self-funded. Um, and so we've, we've seen the benefit of that over the last, um, several years, including over the last five. But beginning next year in 2023, as, as part of our last round of negotiations, um, our staff will, uh, be, begin paying 15% of their premium up from 10%. And so that will also impact us financially in a positive way. Um, also in terms of the economy, uh, we've dealt, we've dealt with the same labor shortages that a lot of, um, companies and industries out there have dealt with. A few examples here of things that, of how that has impacted us and things that we've responded with. Uh, in terms of bus drivers, we're just, as a daily, uh, challenge to make sure we have enough drivers to, uh, transport our kids to and from school um, and make sure we're doing that safely and effectively. We have offered, uh, a sign-on bonus for our drivers. Uh, once they go through all the training, they come onboard, they drive with us for a few months. They do have the option to get a sign-on bonus as a part of a recruitment strategy. Um, and then also, once they, once they're in the door, or even for our existing drivers, we have a incentive for, um, high-quality attendance or perfect attendance to, that allows them to be rewarded for making sure they're here every day and driving, um, and doing things that we need to do. In terms of sub-teachers, this goes back even over, over the last couple of years. We have had, uh, sub-teacher shortages. So thanks to Tanya and her team, uh, we've, uh, been able to increase some of those, um, numbers we have, and definitely thanks to the board for them, for you guys, uh, being supportive of the options we've looked at as we've continued to look at the market in terms of what, uh, pay rates are in the area and what they are across the community to try to make sure that we are, uh, providing a, a pay package that's, that's attractive enough to bring, uh, sub-teachers into the buildings. Um, in terms of specialized and specialized aides, there's another category that, uh, has been impacted by labor shortages. Again, thanks to the board, we were able to offer some additional incentives there to help us attract and retain, um, aides that can, that can help serve our kids and families. Um, next piece, as we look at, um, some of the impacts of COVID and some of the dollars that we received there. The COVID money, uh, we did receive some federal dollars. Sometimes you might have heard or seen that as S or E S S E R, COVID money that came from the federal government. Uh, we didn't receive, if you've watched our board meetings over the last couple of years, you've seen that we, uh, went through a kind of a, uh, petition process or a, a process to appeal and try to get additional COVID dollars because we were not like a lot of other districts that were receiving more dollars. We were, were successful in, in some regards in that, um, in that area. And so we did receive some COVID money. Uh, one of the things I will say that I'm proud of and grateful to our, our board and our team and Dr. Cooper for just working together on this is that a lot of districts that we've talked to across the state, you know, went out and added new programs when they received some of their COVID dollars. And so whether it was, and new programs are not always, they're not necessarily bad. They're probably serving their kids, serving their communities, and all those things are great. But one of the downfalls of new programs on one type dollars is that once those dollars are gone, then you've kind of got a problem of, okay, well, how are we going to continue to fund those, or do we cut those programs? I'm proud to say that, um, in our district, that was not something that we, we did. Fortunately, again, thanks to a lot of people, um, our community, our teams, our staff, our teachers, we were able to keep our buildings open and continue to educate kids. And so we didn't have that, that learning gap or achievement gap that a lot of districts had. And so we were able to keep educating kids here on a daily basis. And so we were able to use our COVID, what, what COVID dollars we did get for things like safety improvements or technology upgrades or to help pay for our existing custodians who are cleaning the buildings and making sure they were safe for kids, or for our nurses, our mental wellness teams, all those things. And so, uh, that also was a, uh, was a benefit for the district and for the community. One of the things I will note, uh, as we look here locally, is our county commissioners were part of that. So a lot of those dollars came through the federal government, um, and were kind of allocated out through the state. But again, want to make sure that we thank our local county commissioners here. They allocated an excess, excess of a million dollars for the district here a couple of years ago to help us pay for some of those COVID, or some of those cleaning supplies and, and things that we needed at the time. And not only that, but they did offer and pay for, um, a nurse that helped us with our tracking and responding and reporting of, of COVID, uh, a couple of years ago. So thanks to them. As we shift into looking at, um, revenues for our district, uh, there's a, the graph you'll see up here, this pie chart, you can kind of see the, the categories of, um, where we receive our funding. Uh, first thing you'll notice, obviously, there's a large, uh, blue portion of that pie graph that, as, represents our local, um, tax dollars. And so, um, not surprisingly, our, our community is our number one source of revenue. And again, we always appreciate our, our community's, uh, support. Um, over 60% of our, uh, revenues came from our community, um, in fiscal year '22. The next biggest source was our, was state funding. That was about 28% last year. So those two categories combined are almost 90% of our, of our funding. Uh, but again, you can see, you know, our local property tax is more than double the amount that we get from, um, from the state. So we definitely could not do what we do, uh, without the support of our community. And as we look at, um, what property values are made up of, in our community, um, not terribly surprising. You'll notice that almost 80% of our, the property values in our district come from homes, uh, from residential property. About 20%, almost 20% comes from commercial. Uh, one of the things I will say is that we are always working with, um, the city, with the township, um, with our county economic development offices to try to attract and recruit and, and bring in more companies that will, um, help increase that commercial percentage. And so we do appreciate our partners in that regard, but again, our families, our families that were here tonight, our families... But again, our families, our families that were here tonight, our families in the community are really the ones who are covering most of that, that local revenue source. As we look at our local property taxes, again, are being our main source of revenue over the last couple of years, the, just a flashback to 2020, it feels like so long ago, but right before, even before COVID. And, and COVID actually impacted the actual voting date, but we did pass that, we were able to pass that operating levy in 2020. And just as a reminder of how that levy worked, that was a two-phased levy. The first part was 4.71 mils, and that started, our community started paying that in calendar year 2021. And that was about $14 per month, per $100,000 valuation. The second part of that levy was an additional 5.25 mils, and that went into effect in the current calendar year, calendar year 2022, in January. The good news on that levy was that due to some good planning over, for our board and past administrations over the last 20 years, we were able to maximize the, the millage situation that we had. We had some debt rolling off, and so the debt that rolled off was able to lower our bond millage. And basically, what happened was that, that the drop in bond millage fully offset the increase in that second phase of that operating levy. So just a reminder of how that worked. And this next graph will actually show that one more time. Again, in 2020, you can see the, the increase up to 2021, the 4.71 mils, and then the flat line from 2021 to 2022. So the, our community did not realize the, the net impact of that increase on their property tax bills due to that bond millage dropping off. For our community members, one of the things that we, one of the questions that we get very commonly, and, and this is an appropriate time to talk about it, just because here in the last couple of weeks, we've had districts in our county, districts in our, in Southwest Ohio, districts across the state on the, on the ballot for some kind of school tax levy. And one of the common questions we get is, well, you know, how are schools funded? We had a family tonight that moved in from Tennessee, and maybe they're experts already, but you know, a lot of times people move in from other states, and they're like, well, this isn't how it works in my state. Like, how does it work in this state? And so that is a common question we get. And so one of the things I did want to put in here is just a, a little bit of a note about why, why people see so many property tax levies from schools. And, and the main cause of that is House Bill 920. There's a graph up here on the screen that is, I will reiterate, is for illustrative purposes only. This is a simplified version of how school funding and school expenses work. Again, not, this is not dollar-for-dollar of a, of how ours works, but again, it's just for illustrative purposes. But in this graph, because of House Bill 920, as property values increase, the actual tax rate decreases. So it's not like the, the income tax that you might pay to the state of Ohio or to the federal government, or even to a local government. The, the tax rate actually changes over time. So every year, the tax rate is a little bit different, which is, again, very different than the income tax. So with our property tax, that is our, that is where our money comes from. But again, as values increase, so over the last couple of years, we've seen inflationary causes of housing values going up, property values going up. And at the same time, if you, if you watch closely and follow tax rates in the county or across Ohio, you're going to see that your tax rate is going to go down, your military is going to go down. So in this graph, because of that, because those tax rates go down, the green in this graph represents revenues from those local property tax, those local property tax levies. And so over time, roughly, those, those revenues are going to stay the same because, again, values are going up, rates are going down. The idea with House Bill 920 is that there's no unvoted tax increase, and so those revenues are staying the same. When you see that jump up in the, in the graph there, my little clicker is not going to show up. Okay. But as you see the jump up in the green there, that's basically representative of some kind of levy. So if a levy passes like ours did in 2020, you're going to see an increase in revenue. And then the revenue source locally is going to be flat again for a number of years. Well, the black line is going to represent a average expenditure line. So as you might have watched in our last levy cycle, we talked a lot about how our expenses had increased lower than the rate of inflation over the past several years. But over time, expenses are going to increase. And so as they gradually increase, you're going to have times where revenues are higher than expenses, and you're going to have times where expenses are higher than revenues. It's kind of the way we call that the levy cycle. And so if you go to the next chart, Tracy, you'll see that we have that listed out here where basically the, the red circle is an example of a time where expenses are higher than revenues. And so in those years, we're eating into our cash reserves. And on the flip side, on the, the blue circle there, you have times where revenues exceed expenses. And so you kind of build up your cash, your cash balance, your cash reserves. And so over time, you kind of have this cycle that we call the levy cycle, is probably three to five years is an average levy cycle for a school district in Ohio. And so just thought it was worth noting how school, a little bit about how school funding works in Ohio and, and why people see school district property tax levies on the ballot so often. So that, that House Bill 920 doesn't allow for those increases over time. And so that's basically when you go back and, and pass new levies, that allows for that one-time increase in, in property tax collections. If you go to the next slide, Ohio School, the Ohio School, or Ohio Fair School Funding Formula, so now we're moving on from local revenue to state revenue. This formula was actually passed in 2021 in the current biennium. So this is the first biennium for our new formula. Formulas in general, and this one is no exception, formulas in general look at local property values, and the state comes up with some kind of determination of, okay, well, it's, how, what are your, what is your property value per student or your relative wealth per student in your community? And then the state will look at that and determine what they're going to fund as a response to that. So in this formula, about 60% of that calculation comes from property values, and about 40% comes from income tax values. We are currently on what we call the, the formula guarantee. So the guarantee basically means that we are getting the flat, getting a, a flat amount each year that we're projecting for the next few years. And we have been on the guarantee for a few years now. The guarantee essentially means that if the state formula really had its way, we would have, we would receive less dollars than we're getting. However, the guarantee kicks in and says, well, you can't get any less than what you got last year. So thus, we're on, we're flat funded. So the guarantee is actually something that we watch very closely. The next biennium budget cycle will start in the spring, and we'll go through the process through, until next summer. And the guarantee is something we'll be watching closely because if they ever change the guarantee to say it's less than 100%, then we could be at risk of having a decrease in funding. That has rarely happened over the last 20 years. So in our forecast, we project flat funding. We project that we'll stay on the guarantee, but it is something worth noting and watching. Moving on to expenses, our expenditure categories, we are a people business, and so our main source of expense is going to be personnel. We don't, again, produce, we don't manufacture tables or carpets or anything. We, we're in the business of teaching kids and educating kids, and that's our, that's kind of our product. And so most of our expense isn't personnel. And so about 85% between salaries and benefits, about 80, 85% of our costs last year were from, were from personnel. And this, the next category beyond that was, was what we call purchase services. It's about 11%. So that's any kind of service that we're buying to help educate our kids, supplemental services or special ed services. It could even be, we, we contract for some of our custodial services. It could be utilities, electric and gas. So those are the kinds of things that fall into that category. 3% of our costs are from supplies and materials, so school bus fuel and instructional supplies, those types of, types of things. One of the things, if you look at our, if you study our forecast, one of the things you will not see in there is capital expenses or permanent improvement expenses. And the reason for that is that we, we do have a separate fund that we track those in. And so the, the general fund forecast that we have does not show any capital expenses for that reason. And then the last category is other items, that's about 1%, property tax collection fees and things like that. One of the things that I, that is worth noting before we move on is that in our expenditure categories, again, 85% of our budget is personnel. And one of the things that we do believe in and, and are grateful for the support of our, our community is that as we attract and retain staff, part of what we believe in is providing a high-quality experience for our kids and our families. And part of the, the biggest, one of the biggest pieces to that is having high-quality staff. And so in order to do that, part of that is compensation. And so our teachers are currently paid in the top tier of the market. And so this forecast projects that our teachers will continue to be paid at the top tier of the market moving forward. And so that is worth, worth noting, that is a high value for us. And so just wanted to make sure that that was, was stated and understood. Our current contracts go through 2024, and then we'll revisit those at that time. Moving on, as we look overall a little bit, our next note is about some of our facility renovations. So this is not in our five-year forecast, this, this is not general fund related. Again, this is more permanent improvement fund related, but it's something worth noting. So if people are seeing things happening over MECC this year, you might notice that there's a project starting over there where we're adding on some classroom space in the back of the building. We'll also be doing some renovations inside the building. That's taking place this year. And then over the next couple of years, you may see if, if things go well pricing-wise and all that, you may see some addition, a small addition over at Mason Intermediate, and also some renovations inside at both ME and MI, and the potential renovation inside here at the high school. A couple of things to note there. One is that these capital improvements are being made with no ask of bond money from our, from our community. So it's something that, again, appreciate the, the board and past administrations who have, who have planned well over the years. There's a couple of sources of funds that we're using to pay for these improvements without asking our, our community for any kind of bond issue. One of those is the sale of the Western Road Building. And so that was sold a couple of years ago. So we, we've set those monies aside for this, these projects, and then also some other capital funds that we, that we had available as well. But in terms of these projects, we have a few goals that we're trying to, to reach with these. One is that this is helping us, we, we always keep a close eye on class size targets. And, and over the last couple of years, we've been trying to bring those down a little bit, especially at the elementary levels. And so some of these additions and changes will help us move towards those targets. And also, they're also, these spaces are also allowing us to respond to some behavior and wellness needs. For example, some of our SESF or our high-need classrooms, as we have more and more kids in those classrooms, we need spaces for them. It also is allowing us to reclaim some of our building spaces that are currently being used for other things. We might have a staff Kiva or some, or even a stage that's being used as a classroom. We're being able to recapture those spaces with these renovations and additions. And then the last thing is just a regeneration and a creation of innovative spaces for students, staff, and for our community. So just looking, and, and again, as you see these projects go through, hopefully, hopefully you'll notice some of those things in these projects, and that's some of the goals that we're trying to meet. As we look at our cash position here in our district, the far left side is fiscal year '22, which we just finished. Out to the right is fiscal year '27. So you can see the, the bars on there are revenues and expenses. The yellow line is our cash balance each year. And so you'll see over the next couple of years, we have, we project our cash balance to increase. If you go back to that, if you're looking back at that chart we talked about a couple of minutes ago, we're in that, we're in that phase right now where we're kind of adding to our cash reserves. And you kind of see over time, we, we get to a point where we're going to start eating into those cash reserves. And so that green line on there is actually our target, where we have a goal of trying to, to stay at least at 20% of our expenses, have cash reserves at, of 20% of our expenses. The reason for that is it kind of allows us to be stable in what we're doing operationally. If you get down too low, it doesn't, to, to pass additional levies, it takes time, it takes time for collection, and so it's not something you can change every night. So we want to make sure that we have enough cash reserves to, to not have major disruptions to our operations. And so that's kind of our target. And so you'll see that in one of the, one of the years, it is important to point out is 2025. 2025 is our year five of our commitment to make the 2020 operating levy last at least five years. You can see at that point, our yellow line is well above the green line there. And so we, again, we'll do everything we can to, to extend this levy out as, as long as possible. More about that in a minute. Next slide shows if we could look back a couple of years, back in 2020, we were the number five-ranked school district on the NISH rankings in Ohio, 68 in the nation. Happy to report that here in 2023, we've actually moved up one spot to the number four. So the number four-ranked school district in Ohio, 91st best in, in the country. One of the reasons we do like the NISH survey is that it's not just achievement or score-based, it also has some factors in there for experiences from students and families. And so we do value what the, the thoughts and experiences of our, our students and families as well. Last piece, just a summary on where we're at. Again, we continue to be, be ranked at or near the top of, of schools in Ohio, in the top 2% in Ohio, and then also highly ranked across the country. And then the last piece there, the 2020 operating levy, we did at the time commit that, that that would last at least five years without an additional levy. And I'm happy to report that we're, by the end of the school year, we'll be three years into that five-year commitment and well on our way to, to meet and exceed that. And again, one of our goals is to push that out as long as possible, and happy to report that we're making good progress there. Any questions from board? We will approve this, we'll approve the actual forecast. This was kind of some highlights on, on our financial situation, but we'll approve the actual forecast and notes assumptions here later in the agenda. And again, appreciate the finance committee walking through that and the entire board walking through that. For anybody out there watching, just so you know, the way, the way that process works is that we do start that forecast internally, then we move on to finance committees. We have two, two members from our board on our finance committee that go through that in detail. Then we take a work session where the whole board looks at that in detail, and we go through a pretty thorough process of evaluating all the assumptions that go into that. And, and so again, appreciate the board's paying close attention to that. I know it's not always the most exciting thing, looking at forecasts and projections, but do appreciate your, your support for that. So, thank you.
Comments?
Just thank, thank you, Sean, for your diligence in putting this together, both the, the detailed level that you share with the finance committee and, and us as a board in the work session, but then also compiling this and boiling it down to a more digestible, high-level presentation here tonight that, that is kind of sums up all of the nuts and bolts that, that we spend a lot of time looking at.
Yeah, thank you, Sean, for compiling this presentation, and it just, it simplified it, but it was very comprehensive. So I appreciate the, the time and effort you put into, to putting this together for us and for our community.
Thank you.
I think it's critical, Sean, I appreciate that you, every board meeting pulls something out of our finances to help us understand, and of course, it's published for the public to review as well. Ohio school funding is a little complicated. Sometimes it's, it's, it's difficult to understand if you don't work with it on a regular basis. But I do feel like this board has worked through time diligently to honor our commitment to our community. And part of being able to keep that is helping our public understand what we're doing and why we're doing it. And you obviously do a great job of that, and I'm very appreciative of it. And I, I've also had public comments to me about the treasurer, and, and they appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you.
I would just maybe add a couple of things. The, you referenced the, Tracy, I think it might have been the first shout-out from one rock to another rock. We had a shout-out from the foundational rock to the culture rock, I think, which may be a first. But it, it kind of reminded me that, that all of our, all of our strategies and all of our priorities wouldn't be possible without this financial, foundational rock. They all are interlinked, obviously, but, but, but this is critical for us to have the latitude to, to operate and try to build on these cultural things that make students' experience throughout their time here at Mason more rich and, and rewarding. So, you know, it's a good reminder of the importance. I also, you, you mentioned the S or money and the, the COVID money. I just want to say how proud I am of this board, that, that we took that money very seriously and put it to long-term use that would result in the avoidance of future taxes for this community. There's not one elected official that's ever gotten any sort of recognition for avoiding something in the future. And the good news about this board, nobody's asking for it. But it's critical broadly because everybody's talking about the inflation and the deficits that are growing, the increased spending that's happening nationally. that are growing, the increased spending that's happening nationally. And that was a dangerous period last year in 2021 when we were literally, us and other school districts were delivered, I'll call it wheelbarrows full of cash from the federal government. And I promise you, everybody would have done what most people would do with a wheelbarrow full of cash is go out and spend it. And we were very deliberate, looked at long-term investments we could make that would pay off for the long term, lower class sizes, newer buildings, things that would that would affect generations to come. And for the community that has a future tax to pay for the mismanagement in Washington and in some cases in the state of Ohio, at least that'll be a small consolation that we won't be coming up asking them for more bond millage to deal with buildings and things that that are necessary. So I really, I'm really proud of that and appreciate that we've been able to to do that and it's referenced nicely in this this update. Thanks.
I'll also say, a lot of you see the numbers and don't see the human side of it. And so, Sean, for you to be proactive, to make sure that our staff is always market competitive and making sure that we have those conversations to make sure that we can retain the best talent and are offering competitive packages in the marketplace for not only our staff, but to make sure we have high-quality people in these buildings is always appreciated. And then the questions that come out of that, you fielding those and and listening is also always appreciated. So you handle the numbers well, but you also handle the people well. So appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan, I think that wraps up all of your presentations tonight for you and Sean.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Sean.
Next on our item tonight is item seven, and that is hearing of the public.
Nothing tonight.
I was going to ask who it was if you said yes. Next up is item eight. I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
This is simply an explanation of a new way that we are starting to, or that we have started, to approve our personnel recommendations from the superintendent. We're taking them all together in a group and I need a motion from the board to do that and then we'll second it and approve that procedure. The point behind it is it makes things infinitely easier for our staff as well as it is more transparent to community or anyone else that wants to review all of that personnel in in one place. So if there are any discussions on that procedure, seeing none, Sean, please call the roll.
Ms. Yenling?
Yes.
Ms. Batshie?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Galvin?
Yes.
Ms. Orr?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is item nine, which is the superintendent's recommendation on personnel accompanied by the document that the board has and was made public as well. I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on tonight's personnel recommendations?
Just a few quick items to just point out. So if you're at home and you're checking out the personnel sheet here that we have for you, I just, like section H, for example, shows you the substitute teachers that are coming in and we're just grateful for subs continuing to come in. So I want to point that out each and every time because it's a lot of work that Tanya and her crew are doing in HR. So thank you for bringing, continuing to recruit subs. Also want to point out that there's some, there's also, if you, if you walk through this, you'll see even a few students that are working for the district because they have applied for different openings. So if you are a student and you've not considered us as an employer, I want to encourage you to consider us. There are some childcare opportunities that are after, excuse me, after school. And there's also some creative options. There's a student on here that's offering an enrichment program for athletics. He was one of our, I believe if I have the right name, one of our sports commentary folks that will always bring you all of the sports on the, online, if you're listening online. So that's another option. And then further on, in AC and the non-district funded certified personnel positions, you can see where student teachers are coming in and we want to thank all of our teachers that host those student teachers and that shows up here where those student teachers are coming from. As a pipeline, you've heard a lot of people talk about the shortage of of teachers in the future. We try to be very open to bring student teachers here so they get to see what we do here and hopefully attract them to be possible future employees of our district. Thanks.
Just to make a point about those student teachers, those funds are paid for by their their schooling that they are enrolled in, the program they're enrolled in.
Their universities do pay for that.
The district. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, Sean, please call the roll.
Ms. Batshie?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Galvin?
Yes.
Ms. Orr?
Yes.
Ms. Yenling?
Yes.
Five oh.
Thank you. Next up is item 10. It is superintendent's recommendation, action item, let's see, several action items. We have the CINTAS graduation agreement, some book disposals and new facility lease and naming rights agreement. I need a motion, please.
I'm going to move that we approve items A and B of this section and table item C.
I second that motion.
Any comments, questions regarding that? Seeing none, Sean, please call the roll.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Galvin?
Yes.
Ms. Orr?
Yes.
Ms. Yenling?
Yes.
Ms. Batshie?
Yes.
Five oh.
Okay, so we'll go back and pick up item A and B in item number 10 on the agenda. And I need a motion to pass only those two items.
I think we, that is what we, yeah, that is what we just did.
Okay, I thought that was to pull it out, but we're, well, we haven't voted, we have to vote to approve A and B, right?
I think that's, that was what my motion was to do.
No, I agree. We're agreeing to it, no?
My, my motion was to approve item A and item B and to table item C. So that's what our, our vote just accomplished that.
Correct.
Yeah.
And now we have to move on.
No, I think we, I think we've, we've, we can move to item number 11, treasurer's report.
Okay. Sean, you good with that?
Yeah. Yeah, so I think his motion put those, put A and B on the, on the floor. That's what we voted on, so.
Was there, was there any, any, I guess, discussion that you wanted to address, Jonathan, or or anybody else on the board as far as those items that we did approve?
Yeah, if I could just have a quick second. One, first, we do have the graduation ceremony status in place now. We did pause on that the last time to do some review of different venues and different opportunities because that was something that we heard and got good feedback on. This is our best option for this next year coming up, so we stuck to this option after the investigation of the different venues. We also have talked to CINTAS Center about future dates and times and so we'll be back on their regular agenda now that we're back in their space again. So that is something I want to mention. Just a reminder, the book disposal, that is a natural, that's just a rotation that we go through all of our books when they get a bit older, that we move those out. There's a process that they go through for that. And then the tabling piece, that's, that's a piece that we've been discussing for quite a while and looking at facilities, naming rights on some of our areas outside with our football field, for example. So we'll come back and have more discussion on that in the future. But yeah, thank you for giving me a second to do that. Appreciate it.
Any other comments, questions?
No, thanks.
Seeing none. Next item is item 11, treasurer's report. I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Sean, I'll turn that over to you for further comments. You've already done a good job tonight, but.
Thank you. Yeah, the main thing on here is our five-year forecast with the the notes and assumptions that go along with that. So once we approve this, we'll submit that to the state and that'll be out on the state website for anybody to to search and see. The other thing I just wanted to note quickly, we're, item A on here, we're approving a couple of new funds, one is for the Cosmic Cafe and one is for some OFCC safety grants. I appreciate Todd and his team working diligently to to use those safety grants for some things that will help improve the safety in our buildings. I think in this particular case, we're looking at some, some cameras over at MI that will help to improve the safety over there. The Cosmic Cafe is a program that is kind of been talked about for the last couple of years and I'm sure you'll hear more. I hope I'm not stealing anybody's thunder by mentioning this, but we have in the high school, we also, we already have the Comet Savings and Loan Program, the student-run bank, and then we also have the Comet Zone where students are selling shirts and things like that over there. Cosmic Cafe is going to be a student-run and the same, a similar venue, a similar vein, a student-run coffee shop here in the high school. So that's, that was actually in the works before COVID. COVID kind of hit and put a lot of those things on pause, but this is the fund that we will use to to start running that activity through there, so.
Very good. Thank you. Any comments or questions regarding the treasurer's report? Seeing none, Sean, please call the roll.
Ms. Galvin?
Yes.
Ms. Orr?
Yes.
Ms. Yenling?
Yes.
Ms. Batshie?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Five oh.
Okay, next up will be our committee reports for the evening. We had arts and activities that met since our last meeting. Tanya, were you in attendance and take that report?
We approved several activities. One of the highlights was the orchestra being invited back to a prestigious event and I cannot remember where they're going.
Science Olympia.
Oh, and Science Olympia. So our, our group just discussed those particular items and we approved them, both of those trips for those two groups.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next item is diversity council. Tracy or Jonathan?
Yeah, we had a, a great meeting where we looked at some of the professional learning that we've been doing in our Windows and Mirrors series. And so we had all of our, our DEI leaders and our IE focus teams came together that included a parent panel and so they gave an update to our diversity council with the highlight from our MECC team about how they're incorporating those lessons into kind of their morning meetings, particularly around disability with a focus on every comment count, every comet counts. And then we also dug in as part of our OKR process to really look at our, how our students are sharing their perception of engagement around, using our Panorama data. And particularly of interest in our DEI council is a, is a part of that OKR, which is that we want to see it across all subgroups. And so we looked at that as a team and looking at race, looking at gifted students, looking at it by students on IEPs, looking on it by our students who are English language learners across buildings, across grades. Amy did a really terrific job of kind of sharing insights. And then our council had the opportunity, which is the best part of data, is to sit and go, wow, I wonder what that means. And so, and that's what our leaders are doing in buildings too. And so we're kind of taking some of that feedback and they're continuing as teams to work on that.
Very good. Thank you. Next up is finance committee. Sean or Jonathan?
Yeah, so over the last couple of months, we've had a chance to review some different things. One was the five-year forecast and then also we've been looking at some different service contracts and lease agreements in the district. So finance committee has helped us kind of comb through some of those, so no action yet on that front, but it was something we had, did have some good discussion on in finance committee.
Very good. Student achievement committee.
We met last Thursday and had a focus on our second objective of designing meaningful, authentic and relevant learning for all. So also had a chance to look at some of our student engagement data from Panorama and then to hear from our high school team, including one of their students, about the high school team's efforts to really understand and respond to the results that they're seeing from that Panorama student survey data. They shared ways that they've been tapping into students' voices and experiences to understand really like, what does it mean from a student's perspective when they answer a question a certain way and what could be potential responses, as well as some pilots that they're doing with teachers with surveying students as they exit to kind of get teachers to also build their understanding of, of how are students perceiving engagement on a, on a day-to-day level in the classroom. And got to hear about some of the great other teacher learning that they've been doing with input from teachers around what they, what they need, the skills that they're looking for, the time to collaborate that they're seeking to be able to continue to grow those efforts. We also, we had a jam-packed meeting, so I'm going to go on just a couple of minutes more. I'll try to keep it short, though. We got to hear about some proposed new learning opportunities for, that would take place starting next school year. So one is to add a, another Great Oaks Satellite Program here at the high school. We currently have Biomed Engineering and Teacher Academy. There's another program, Project Lead the Way, which has a focus on engineering. And so heard a bit about that program. It's really designed to be an opportunity for students who are interested in engineering and all sorts of different pathways to explore and build some skill related to that, whether they're, they could go into employment following high school or it could prepare them to go into an engineering program in a, in a college or university following high school. And so that would be started in ninth grade with just one course and it builds over, over years. It's a, the, the Oaks is a career tech education program, so the Oaks provides the staff member to us all of the equipment. We just provide the, the space for that to take place. We also heard about a new course proposal in the science department called The Science Behind Our Food. So very interesting kind of interdisciplinary, additional, higher level, advanced science course offering that's offering some more opportunities for students after they get through the required science classes. But that's also not just an AP class. So a student who may not be interested in going that route to be able to offer some more choices for them. And I anticipate, all of these were presented to the committee and we got feedback from, from committee members, anticipate that being on our December board agenda for a first reading and then the way that would go would be a first reading and everyone would be able to see that, community can see it in December and then it would be a vote to adopt in, in January would be when the vote would take place. And the third, also related to science, was a discussion related to offering students some more choice in their science pathways. So currently, an eighth grader taking eighth grade science, eighth graders typically take either eighth grade science or they could take an advanced course, take physical science, a high school credit course in eighth grade. The, we, we heard from Liz Coleman, our science department chair, a proposal to allow those eighth graders who are taking eighth grade science but are motivated STEM-oriented students to go into biology. So they would get their physical science experience through other classes. Chemistry counts as a physical science class, for example, and allows them to kind of open up more science options later in their high school career. And so it's really about just providing more, more choice for students where it's the right fit for them. And then, I mean, I really, it was a lot. So then we also are in the midst of our social studies instructional resource review this year and so had an opportunity for committee members to see our, what we call our compass, which is really our guiding visionary document about what do we believe social studies instruction should look like in Mason City schools. It's created by teams of teacher leaders from all grade levels who really dig into the research about what does the research say about what is best practice in social studies instruction right now. And then we also look at it through the lens of what do we believe in, what are our values as a school district, so also through the lens of our, of our big rocks. And so this document is used, it's, it's meant to be aspirational to help hopefully guide us for years to come and to be a guide when we look at resources that we're going to invest in to say, do these, do these, these help get us closer to this vision or not? So we got some great feedback on that. We'll be revising that as we start to now dig into those potential resources.
Great, thank you, Amy. Any comments or questions?
I for one was, I'm always impressed because your, your area is, is high-profile, we're school district, right? You're in charge of curriculum and instruction and I just love the way your meetings are very data-driven, the data points that you pull, including the students and utilizing that in our teacher academy. It's the innovation with new classes and allowing students to pursue earlier what their post-secondary goals will be so they can take more classes in high school. It's one of the things I think that sets Mason apart, the innovation that we strive for there and you and your team do a great job. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I just happen to be lucky enough to be at that meeting. Okay, next up, item 13, legislative update. Jonathan?
Sure. Legislative update, you know, we just had elections and so I want to congratulate everyone on their election process, those that were going through the process and thank them for wanting to serve in that way. And also, I believe, if I remember correctly, I think there were, I had 87 of the 120 levies that were on the ballot, that 73% of those passed, which is, just says a lot about communities and supporting schools right now. And so I just remind. now. And so I just remind, I'm reminded of how grateful we are here at Mason City Schools for the investment our community makes, and Sean pointed out earlier. Here are some bills to watch, okay? So this is a lame duck ser, session that's getting ready to begin. And so we, we are a part, as a school district, a part of the Alliance and other organizations that help us to watch these bills closely and also give us a, a larger voice in Columbus. House Bill 616 and House Bill 529 are bills that we discussed last year. We even had some public interest in those and wanting us to watch those and make sure we voice. Right now, neither one of those bills looks like they're going to move forward because there's some substitute bills that are being proposed as well. So Adam Byrd has proposed a couple of substitute bills for these bills. And just to remind you of the categories, these are like the CRT, Curriculum Transparency Bills that are out there, they're going across the country. The new proposed bills to replace those would be the House Bill 748 and 745. And those are again, being proposed by Adam Byrd. So you can look at those. It, it changes some of the language. It, it points more towards reminding us to just be professional rather than telling us exactly what we need to do, if that makes sense. So it changes some of the spirit of those bills, still understanding that we already are very transparent with the things that we do in and out of our classroom. So I'll point that out and we'll continue to give you updates on that as that moves forward. There's also a House Bill 497, which we also have interest in. That is the bill that is proposing that we stop the third-grade guarantee process where students are being held back. A couple of parts of that, the bill would end the requirement that students who fall short of the promotion score to be held back on the English Language Arts Test in third grade. The second part of that is that they would go from testing kids twice a year to once a year. So we'll continue to watch that as well. So the first part of that, the good thing is we already have great systems in place to predict what students may or may not need support. And that's something that our curriculum folks have been on top of the whole time. I mean, it's not new to Mason. We have those accountability measures. And we also have support measures in place for students that do potentially struggle with that so that we have all the systems and support in place for them. So we're doing that, so it's not a big, those bills that were in place already, it was not a huge concern, but this, this, the testing half as much is something we're interested in, some less, less state testing. And then another piece, the House Bill 554 is a temporary education license for those who may have already retired or their, their license has expired. And this is to hopefully help with some of the teacher shortage and making it easier for teachers that do have training, but maybe their license is expired to get an emergency license to get back in and help with teaching. And then there's a lot on here, but the final one I'll just point out is House Bill 492 is one that is addressing mental health training for athletic coaches. So understanding that mental health doesn't stop at the door, it goes out onto the field. And it's something we're discussing a lot here, and what does leadership look like in the whole health of our students and our student athletes. And you even heard some of our students tonight talk about that, and a good example of how that healthy culture does serve our students well. So those are just a handful of them. There's many more. I'll keep you posted as we go forward in December.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything from board member tonight? No. Okay, next item is 14, administrative commentary. Tracy, we'll start with you.
Nothing tonight.
Amy?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Tanya?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Mr. Petrie?
Nothing for me.
Nothing tonight.
It's been a full meeting. I'll just remind everybody that our, our marching band, fourth in the nation, so I just got to just say it. And then OSBA, we had students presenting at the OSBA conference and our very own Charles Galvin. So Charles, you did a great job. Thank you.
Very good. Next is board commentary. Ian, I'll let you go first tonight.
Uh, well, fall sports concluded this past weekend, so, you know, kudos to all the athletes, families, coaches for wrapping up what could be considered a successful fall season. We're hanging some banners over for boys and girls cross-country. Excited about that. We celebrated our girls tennis team for hanging a sixth consecutive banner. So we hope we carry that momentum over into winter sports. I can, I can hear the balls bouncing and squeaking and the splashing of the, of the swimming pool. Wanted to, to shout out my colleague, Charles Galvin, for doing a bang-up job today in Columbus, represented our district very well. You know, when you're in a room full of school board members, that's a pretty tough crowd, and you had a lot of people going, ooh and ah, and we should do that. So apparently whatever you said was resonating, but you did, did a fantastic job, as well as our high school IE team who presented at the Student Achievement Fair. Lot of districts coming by to ask them how that program was implemented. So thank you to Dr. Jordan and Soroya Smith for leading those three students up there to, to do that work. Excited for the students to have the week off next week. I'm sure they get a chance to recharge and reconnect and, and get ready for the, the stretch run. But there are some, some students and families I'd like to shout out. Isaac Miller, first of all, glad to hear that, that he is healing well, as well as Nora Bowman, who is also healing well and recovering, and she's got a little bit of a journey to go. But, you know, glad to hear that, that she's still hanging in there. To the family of, of Doug Burke, his wife, Chris, is a para in the middle school. His son, Ian, is a high school senior. He passed away a couple weeks ago. So to that family, we, we give our sincerest condolences and, you know, wrap that comic care around them. And lastly, to a former resident of this district who loved this school district and, and its people in it, and it was a friend of mine, Tanisha Agee Bell, passed away about three weeks ago. And so we, we wish her family the best, and we love them and send them care down in Atlanta is where they are now. So, you know, just, just keep those thoughts in, folks in your thoughts and prayers as we move into this season of celebration.
Very good. Other, other end?
That was very eloquent, so I won't repeat. All very good points, which I agree with, including the oohs and ahs that Mr. Galvin must have gotten from the crowd in Columbus. I would add, though, that I want to thank the Kiwanis Club. Kiwanis Club in Mason is a key, key part of our, our entire community. And they had their pancake breakfast. From my judgment, it might have been one of the best they've had in terms of financial returns. I don't know if that's true, but it sure looked promising. And our students are recipients of many of, of the donations that the Kiwanis Club of Mason makes. And so that's great where the community comes in, supports them, and, and, and in turn, they support our students. And I think I've said some of the other things about the students we recognize today, and certainly wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and agree that students have an opportunity a little, maybe a little longer than normal to get some relaxation and get back at it. Thank you.
The infamous Mr. Galvin.
Well, I want to thank Ian in particular, and also the rest of the admin team, Jonathan, Sean, Amy, for coming up and supporting me and giving a presentation today, more, probably more of a catharsis and, and just therapy session for me more than anything, but happy to share my experiences and, and help, you know, where I can with some other board members in the district, and, and also use that as an opportunity to just acknowledge, you know, Connie, the appreciation I have for you following me in that president seat this year, because one thing I, I touched on today is that it's easy, you know, watching the meetings and Monday morning quarterbacking things. It's a, it's another thing when you're sitting in that seat, and it's, it's a difficult, you know, position to, to juggle all the moving parts we have. I think in particular, tonight is a good example of how you've kind of put your, your own thing, thumbprint, fingerprints on, on that seat with our, our visiting. You know, you worked hard with the Mason Schools Foundation to create a memorable experience for the, the silent auction winners there. And just appreciate the job you do. And also want to echo our sentiments to those families in our community that have experienced some hardships recently, whether they're currently in that struggle or they're, they're experiencing loss. Our, our prayers and thoughts are with you. And then just also underscore the congratulations to all of our fall sports teams, particularly our state champion teams, our band in receiving, you know, outstanding performance and, and fourth place at the Bands of America competition. And then also just wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving next week.
Thank you for your kind comments. Desiree?
I just, yeah, it's been a full meeting, but I did want to take a minute to thank you, Connie, for making those kids feel comfortable tonight and giving them an important role in the meeting and including them in the agenda. I know you worked hard to do that, and it went off perfectly, but I know there was a lot of work behind the, the scenes to make that a good. Perfect was perfect. And just thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I, I have a couple of comments tonight. We did go to Columbus past couple days, and I did note an exhibit up there that kind of caught my attention. It's SADD, S-A-D-D. It's a student-run organization. Well, it's, it's a nonprofit organization, but it engages students to employ their peers to make good decisions. And the SADD stands for Students Against Destructive Decisions. And it can cover a gamut, but they do focus a lot on teenage driving. So I did bring some information with me tonight, Dr. Cooper, that I will give to you.
Great, thanks.
After the meeting. I also appreciate very much what the district does with our students, helping our students recognize our veterans. We always do a great job of that, and the kids are so proud. Many of them bring their grandfathers, their fathers, and uncles. It's, it's a brilliantly run recognition, as far as I'm concerned, over, looking at it over time while I've been on the board. So I appreciate that very much. And I also wanted to extend my congratulations to the Student Foundation, Mason Schools Foundation, for brilliantly run auction again. That's one of their biggest fundraisers every year. And the Harmon family truly was a joy to work with. The parents, I don't know if they were more excited than the kids to do this, maybe so. But I met with them last night to kind of brief them on what would happen tonight, and just beautiful support from our community to the school district ongoing. So with that, I will ask the question, as I had to part upstairs early, are we adjourning into work session, or are we going home tonight?
I think we're ready to adjourn to go home tonight.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
In that case, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
In second?
Second.
Sean?
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.